Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's planning board meeting. It's Tuesday, October 11th at 7:00 PM. We will be getting underway with our continued, our first public hearing this evening at 7:15. So we'll take care of some old new business in the meantime. Tonight, we have a full, a full board. Our alternate member, Member Connolly, is not present this evening, but all other board members are present. The first item on our old new business section of the agenda is approval of meeting minutes. I believe we have August and September. Ready?
We have June and September.
Oh, June and September. Okay. June and September. August is one of the longer meetings we had this summer, so I know Luis is still working on that. So Chair will entertain a motion for approval of the June and the September 2022 meeting minutes.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Great, thank you. We have, I'm just going to jump down to the master plan update. I hope you all have seen the invitation for this weekend's open house, which is going to be here in this room. It's from 2:30 to 4:30. We will have our consultant here hosting a visioning workshop with different hands-on activities and kind of going over the results of the summer engagement process that we underwent this summer. We had close to 1,800 responses on our survey, which the consultant noted was fantastic and more than they had expected for a community of our size. So that's really good news. So if you want to stop by Town Hall this weekend and check that out, it's a drop-in event. Families are welcome. And please, please stop by. The other item to note is that the meeting in a box is still open. If there is anybody out there looking to host a meeting in a box, or if you did host one and you have notes from that, please get that in by October 14th so that the consultant can take that information and incorporate it into the documents they're working on. And we also are making note that the existing conditions report has been published for public comment. So that is a summary of a lot of the census data, past report data that the consultant has been gathering to create an updated existing conditions report. It's a pretty long document. There's an executive summary if you just want to kind of get the gist of what it is. But again, we are accepting public comments, so if there is anything in there that you would like edited or make comments on, please send that along. I believe you can email the planning department. That's probably the best way. Connor, do you have anything else to add with regards to the master plan?
No, you summarized it quite well. Thank you.
Great. With that being said, and we do have some time, let's jump over to request for as-built approval and release of surety. Are either of these, are these ready? Are we waiting on anything?
So, the real estate is not ready. Tonight, I believe Director Santucci is working with Sammy Oats on that.
Okay.
16 to 18 Pearl Street, which was requested by Bowler Engineering. I provided the board with a staff report towards the tail end of the week on Thursday. The site itself seems to be built in conformance with their record plans. However, I would like to note that the existing condition of pavement that surrounds the building isn't in the greatest state. I would kindly note that some of the old pavement markings were very visible with the new pavement markings sort of just painted over them. The site, well, I'm of the opinion that maybe a full-depth rebuild isn't in the works. I would really suggest that the site be seal-coated and that it be crack-sealed as well in addition to new pavement markings. This is a site located within our South Braintree Square, which is filled with commerce, filled with pedestrians, a lot of visibility. It would really complement the square itself if that was updated. The applicant did reach out to us this morning, Bowler Engineering. They stated that the prior contractor went out to fix this issue. I believe they, they blacked out the old directional striping with new directional striping. There was an update provided to you. I believe from Bowler Engineering, it was an email underneath the documents that were placed at the table tonight. It was towards the tail end of that packet.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So staff's recommendation on this matter is for the applicant to seal coat and crack seal the entire site with new stripings. And then if that's completed by the November meeting, we will recommend as-built approval with the release of surety.
I remember, I don't remember specifically notes on the parking lot saying it was repaved. Do you happen to have the plans? Do you have the folder with you or no?
I do. I have the record plans as well. The record plans did not call, call for any sort of repaving or restriping or anything in that matter. There was a little bit of new striping added because of the dumpster area, but they never, there was no note on that.
Okay. Member McComme, do you have any comments or questions with regards to this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we have the ability to tell them that this needs to be done before the surety will be released? Or is it consistent with what they write that it's just part of the aesthetics?
Mainly, it's part of the aesthetics. It's difficult to say from a drainage standpoint because the whole site really flows out onto Pearl Street. It's more from an aesthetic look, given the fact that the whole building and the landscaping saw an overhaul as part of this approval. It is something I would recommend that they do. I'd have to take a deeper dive into what we can regulate, but it's something that I would certainly encourage.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Member Crowe, any comments or questions?
I would just need to look at the original decision a little bit closer in light of their request to release the bond without doing anything more. I didn't focus on that, whether or not that could be something that we require or not require. So from my perspective, I'd prefer to continue it and maybe go by the site and take a look at it based on the email this morning.
Okay. Member Kent, any comments or questions?
Well, as a comment, it seems that it would make perfect sense to do what's requested. I mean, you don't remodel your house and then not cut your lawn. I mean, why would you not try to make the whole property as attractive as possible, especially when, I don't think we're talking about a large dollar amount. So if, if we can, you know, if we have the authority to insist, then I think we should insist. If we don't, it's a strong recommendation that they should, they should heed.
Member Grove, do you have any comments or questions? So it sounds like, I think we'd like to review the file in a little bit more detail. And can we continue this to the next meeting?
Correct. Yes, we can continue it to November.
So, motion to continue, request for as-built approval and release of surety for 16 to 18 Pearl Street to the November? What is the date?
It's Wednesday, November 9th.
All right, so Wednesday, November 9th. Motion to continue this at seven, well, into the old new business section of the agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, we'll continue that. Do we have, we have a request for release of surety for 201 Commerce Drive?
Correct. Yes. I provided the board with a brief memo earlier this afternoon. The applicant Mark Companies is underway finishing their second phase of their development. They were seeking a certificate of occupancy towards the beginning of the summer. Most of the landscaping had not been completed on-site. They posted cash surety and a full estimation of the landscaping services with this department. They were issued temporary certificate of occupancy. They are working to get an as-built plan to us. We are holding $10,000 in as-built surety at this moment. They've completed landscaping and are seeking a request to release that surety.
Okay. Member McComme, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions, thank you.
Member Crowe, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions, thank you.
Member Kent, do you have any comments or questions?
No, no questions, no comments.
Member Grove, any comments or questions? All right, great. So we have a staff recommendation for favorable action on a surety release. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, great. It's almost 7:15. What time here? 7:13. We are going to, at 7:15, we're going to take the public, the continued public hearings. We have two this evening. We're going to take them out of order. Actually, we're going to, at 7:15, open with Town Council Order 22-012 zoning ordinance text amendment. So in about two minutes, we'll take that up. Does anybody have any questions on the master plan or what's going on with that? Just to jump back there to fill time? No?
Do you know what the format will be specifically for the weekend?
Yeah, so I think it's going to be broken up. What we're, what we're collectively working on is a draft vision statement. So it'll be kind of like when you jump into the plan, it's like, what is this plan about? So it is kind of like a broad brush stroke of what it's all about and what we envision Braintree to be in 2033. So I think we're going to talk a little bit about the draft visioning statement. I know the master plan steering committee started work on it last Monday, but that process is going to be talked about on the community forum. And then I think they're going to have, there was tentative talk, I think this is the, what they're going to do, but they're going to have like stations for like visioning of certain areas of town. I think they're going to base that on like, maybe like Ivory Street or Quincy Ave or the Landing, like, so different areas in town and just kind of try to brainstorm ideas about what people see there, what they like there, kind of just trying to caption a vision. So I think the last community forum was very much focused on existing conditions, kind of things more broad stroke. And this is very specific to the vision aspect of our master plan. So I think it'll be really exciting. So, all right, it is 7:15. So with that, we will hear Town Council Order 22-012 zoning ordinance text amendment. I know our planner this evening, I think, is Melissa calling in? So she, she's just going to listen, is that right, or?
She's just going to listen, and then she has to say something.
Okay, okay. All right, so we have Connor, also Melissa for this moment on the phone. And then we have Mayor Kokoris here with us this evening. He is the official applicant on this, so we're happy to have you here to talk about this. This has been on our agenda for some time now. I understand that the last, last time we talked about this, we talked about maybe looking at some of the, the numbers and maybe some modifications, which we did get. So I don't know if it makes the most sense. Mayor Kokoris, if you want to come up and just kind of give an overview, I know you've been doing a lot of work on this and behind the scenes, so if you just want to kind of update us, and then I'll open it up to the board and the public for comment.
Certainly.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you, Madam Chair and members. I appreciate all the hard work that you do and all the hours that you put in, in the late-night meetings. It means a lot for the community. So upon review of the initial document, you know, there was a lot of conversation as to, first of all, there's, on the first page, there was a, there's a modification that we put in that specifically speaks to the table use. For whatever reason, we omitted removing the reference to commercial districts. So that is just a, that was just a piece that we needed to add in. So there's no change as far as that is concerned. We did include congregate living facilities. That's on page two. So that is an addition for units that would be subject to the inclusionary zone. And then upon further review, we started to look at, first of all, you know, the initial one unit for six to 10, we, remains the same. But looking at 11 to 50 units, we are looking at 10% affordability. 51 to 75 units, we're looking at 12 and 1/2%. And anything 60, 76 units and above would be 15%, which is far different from the original proposal, which I think was, it might have been a little more difficult for some of the smaller, smaller projects. So we tried to come up with a number that would be more reasonable and make sure that we maintain our affordability once we've reached it, but also give folks the ability to, to build a reasonable, smaller number of units with, with a huge impact. I think the 15% on the, on the smaller projects would have been detrimental and probably would have kept some of them from even happening. So we've made some adjustments there. And as far as the last, the last piece on the last page is in reference to commercial districts. And in regards to removing housing from commercial districts, as we started to look at the commercial districts that we have out there, it really, most of the commercial districts really do not represent a place that you would want to have housing. They're more of industrial-type areas than, than commercial, I think, but, because they were originally industrial and became commercial. There is one parcel that I did speak with the owner and explain that we were moving in this direction, and the remedy would be for them to move to highway business or request. And that particular property owner is, is more than willing to do that. That's something they want to do. So that was really one of the issues, one of the district councilors, the president of the council, and I had discussed. And that was the main concern with the commercial restriction not being allowed. So this is a product that, you know, began with the 15%. And now we've been able to work through, to come up with some more reasonable numbers that serve two purposes. One, maintain, will help us maintain our 10% when we get there, and also will allow for some of the smaller development that we see coming about throughout our town. So I appreciate the consideration and would ask for your support for this to go to the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just a reminder, if anybody's here from the public and wishes to ask any questions or to speak on this particular item, this is still a continued public hearing, so please feel free to come up if you have comments that you would like to offer. And I'm going to just start with board members after. Member McComme, do you have any comments or questions about the revisions before us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask the staff, and I know Melissa's been working on this, but she's not here. Now that we have this, and it looks like it's been reviewed and we're being asked to put it forward, what will happen going forward? So for example, is there any, an applicant comes to us, they need a special permit. Is there basically no flexibility whatsoever? You have to meet these requirements at the minimum?
Yes, you have to. So if you have units that are going to fall within those, those guidelines, then yes, you will have to.
Okay, so they can't come to us and say, you know, I got 50 units, but instead of five, can, can I get four? They can't, they can't do that.
One second. Yes, Melissa, we can hear you. You there?
Yes.
Okay. You're on mic.
Okay.
Were you going to respond? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm watching it on TV. Is it delayed?
A little, it must be delayed on the, on the broadcast, yes. It's probably a 20-second delay.
Chair, I can answer that question.
Okay.
This is, this is, the restriction is exactly what you say. There is, there is no flexibility as far as modifying once this is created into an ordinance.
Okay.
So the only remedy realistically is if, and we've seen it in many developments where, you know, we have situations where six to seven per acre allowed, but we end up sometimes with as much as, you know, 30 per acre based on, you know, these smaller developments that, you know, for example, I think, most recent one, I think it was about 30, it would average about 30 or 34. So if necessary, if somebody was close on margins, they could go to the ZBA and ask for relief there. But as far as if they come to you and say, we're building 50 units, they didn't go through for any remedy as far as number of units, that would be standard. The 50 units, I think, is 10%. Yeah.
Okay. And while you're there, Mr. Mayor, I know there was some discussion that we were going to talk to some developers. Did any of that research happen to happen?
I did have some conversations with the developers of the smaller units. So that was something that determined making the adjustments, as you see today.
Right, so that was, that was helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So they, they feel like perhaps they'd be able to get some economic return?
Yeah, I think 15, through the chair, sorry. 15% was
Too high.
Too much for them. And I think that basically 10% seemed to be more agreeable for the smaller developments. I didn't really, wasn't anyone I really talked to that was in that 51 to 75. Pretty much everyone was 50 or less.
Got it. That's probably the best target zone. Yeah. That sounds good. I don't think I have anything else. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Member McComme, Member Crowe, any comments or questions, thoughts?
Yeah, thank you. My question would be, the MBTA zoning has come out and the, the action plan is due January 31st if communities want to have their, I can't remember the phraseology, but initial approval to go through and put together a bylaw. And my, my two thoughts when looking at it, and the percentages do seem much more realistic with bringing, realistic might not be the best word, but much more palatable to invest or looking to invest in the town and, and build units. And the town's certainly done a good job of getting the affordable housing up to the 10% and gotten over that 10% and on different units, including that Hancock Street project. But the two thoughts that I had were, when the action plan, if, if the town goes forward on that to try to get the initial approval through the MBTA zoning requirements, part of the action plan talks about what steps there are to incorporate multifamily housing within a half a mile. And the Armstrong Dam site is currently commercially zoned, and that's within a half mile and has, has some significant upgrades that seem like it would make a really great location for housing to go. And so I'm concerned that having this go through now and taking away that commercial property would really hamper what efforts the town might be interested in making with the MBTA zoning. And then, secondly, having this finalized and on the books might make it harder to come up with a well-rounded plan that could, whether we as a town decide that we want to put a, put a bylaw together that meets the MBTA guidelines, or whether it's something separate than that that helps to fulfill some of the visions and thoughts that are coming out of the master plan, that having this on the books might make it more difficult to cater to something that looks on a broader basis of what that multifamily housing might look like. I guess that was a, a long question, but whether or not this was part of the, whether or not the MBTA zoning and the new regulations that came out in August had been part of the thought or been considered at all with putting this forward right now.
I would say, through the chair, I would say that in regards to that piece of property, that was the piece that I was talking about earlier. So I think that they're going to move towards highway business, so I think it will remedy that issue prior to, most likely prior, if this is passed, prior to us moving towards finalizing any MBTA zoning. And, you know, it's interesting because it's, it's a moving target, we've got a new governor that's going to be elected, so I'm really not sure what's going to happen with it. The, you know, the original legislation just called for 18 units per acre and has kind of morphed, 15 units per acre, I think it was, and kind of morphed into something different. And then they recently made a modification. They took out communities that had, you know, bus routes and things like that. So I don't know where, where they're going to be down the line as far as what their expectations are going to be. We're, we're trying to meet all the requirements by the deadline so that we don't lose our ability to, to apply for grants. But I think that that piece of property is very valuable in, in this particular context, and that's something that, you know, I'll support when they move forward, when they move forward with an application. So that would be the short answer on that. And, you know, we'll have to see if there's any other changes that are made because, you know, there's been pushback from, the Mass Municipal Association has been pushed back from some other groups. I don't know if there's going to be further pushback, but I would certainly say as mayor, I think that even, you know, initially, there was no talk of affordability within the original plan, and now there's some talk of affordability. So we're not even sure if we would be allowed to utilize this ordinance as part of the affordability of, of those units. So I think that certainly, you know, we can support, or I will support, the rezone. But in, in regards to what the future of the zoning is, it may change as they move forward. But I think that that location will probably be zoned something else prior to this making its way through.
Thank you. That's, no, not for now. No, thank you. No. Member Kent, do you have any comments or questions?
I guess perhaps as a comment, the cost of borrowing is going through the roof, and that could put a further pressure on what actually happens as a result of this. I don't know if you've had input from any of the people you've talked to about that, but it's, it's going to be a lot harder to make these things work financially.
I'll just say that through the chair, I'll just say that definitely, I mean, cost per units today, you know, not only is it interest rate, but also, you know, we just awarded today, it was a historic day, awarded the bid on the treatment plant for, for our regional treatment plant. It was historic day. It was, you know, it came in millions of dollars more, tens of millions of dollars more than we originally cost, cost it out for last year. So there's definitely a lot of constraints in the area construction. But on the same note, the, the cost of rent is extremely high as well, so there is an offset, but I, I do take that into consideration. Thank you.
All set.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I don't
I don't see the 75 units being taken advantage of nearly as much as the other three categories. You know, my personal preference would be to see the 11 to 50 and the 51 to 75 a little higher. Connor, how under the zoning bylaw is the height determined?
The height of the
Height. Is it by height?
So, under our definition of height of a structure, found in 102 of the chapter
Speaking to the microphone.
Under section 102 definitions, height of a structure, the surveyor will take a spot grade out 10 feet of the face of the building. So 10 feet out from each face of the building, they take a spot grade, and then they average those grades to render an average grade. They use that average grade to then construct their building, and then they have a top of ridge, and that top of ridge is then used against the average grade to ensure the height of the building.
Okay, but it's by structure, not by zone, right?
I'm sorry, sir, could you repeat that?
It's by the structure. How is it determined? By the structure or by the zone, or is that just one height?
Each zone has different height requirements under the table dimensional, but they are all calculated the same.
Okay. Do you happen to have access to that right now?
The density and dimensional table? I have it right in front of me, sir.
Okay, so what would the height on this be in a cluster one?
In a cluster, under the table density and dimensional regulations, the maximum building height in cluster one, two, and three is 35 feet in height.
How many feet?
35 feet.
So you're not getting more than a two-story building?
Essentially, depending.
Okay, and with the space requirement per unit, that's going to give you what, like 16 units?
Maybe. It all depends. It's on a case-by-case basis. It really depends on the land that they're using.
Okay, and what is the highest we can go in any one zone?
Highest in any one zone would be within the general business, highway business, and commercial districts. There's a maximum building height of 45 feet, and then 50 feet for non-habitable space.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, member Grove. I wanted to spend some more time reviewing it. I had kind of a busy afternoon, so apologies for that. But I think a lot of what other members commented on, overall, I think having an affordable housing, having that prioritized and thought of by the town and is very important. I think there is an element of finance, certainly, that could potentially hinder that, and I just, I'd just like to spend more time to try to understand, you know, I think we have to be proactive as a town in whatever our redevelopment is. I think through the master plan, a lot of people are talking about what's next for the town and what that looks like. And I'm, you know, the things that come up that seem like they could be more restrictive or against the goals we're trying to get to, I think the best that we can try to not put barriers in our own way is something we should think of thoughtfully. So I'm happy to see some of these numbers revised. I think also, once you get over, I think it's like 40 or 50 units and you have affordable component, there's a lot of tax credits that are available for developers. So I think it is more appropriate to have the percentages be a little higher in that because there'll probably be other things at play when a developer comes in to build at that density. I think also the densities that can be built by right in Braintree are low, and I know we're not at this time looking at revisions to other sections of our bylaw that might make this more effective. But again, I think, you know, I think, I know that the mayor and his office and Melissa, the planning department have spent a lot of time talking to a lot of people about this, so I'm really looking forward to like getting into it, but I think I just need more time. And I also know member Connolly is incredibly involved in affordable housing, so I'd love to have her perspective on this. I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts, but I'm thinking maybe taking just another, a little bit more time and having it be on next month's agenda to kind of hopefully move it forward or make any suggested revisions. What do you guys think?
Makes sense to me.
Did you have any, were you waving at me?
No.
Mayor Corus, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
Yeah, just, you know, obviously, this is something that you guys have just received recently, and I would anticipate that you'd want to take some time to look it over. I just wanted to present it to you formally. I know it's been a while since the original document has been given to you, so I'd be more than happy to, you know, take your time and go through it.
Great. Thanks for coming tonight.
Well, my pleasure.
Our special guests, and we don't, we really don't have too much of an audience tonight, so.
Well, I really do appreciate everything that you folks do.
Thank you.
I do. And I'm not going to take up any more of your time, but thank you for hearing me tonight and take your time and look through it.
Great.
Thank you. Okay?
Thank you.
Take care.
So we just need a motion to continue this. The next meeting is November, Wednesday, November 9th, and this would be at 7:15.
Madam Chair, can I just ask one more question?
Yep.
So since you're a member of the steering committee in the master plan, how does this look to you with what you've heard from the master plan? Because, you know, you're trying to balance the two.
Yeah, I think there, everybody talks about wanting affordable options, especially people in our community who are retiring or looking to retire, and they don't want, they want to downsize from their single-family house, and they want somewhere to go, so, and there's just this, there's an immense need for affordable housing. So I think part of the conversation it's worth having is like, are we, like, we're building to meet a need, but are we capturing the need of the community? I feel like there's a lot more discussion to be had about what that is and looks like, especially tied into the MBTA community stuff as well. So people are definitely talking about this, and I think more will come out of the master plan with regards to it. So I, you know, I think we should keep that in mind, too, so.
Yeah, because, of course, a lot of people talk about the need for senior housing, which also means to me affordable housing. So, you know, we haven't really done a lot in that area, so.
Yeah. And I think, speaking to member Kent's comment on finances, you know, we could have a lot of affordable housing if you and I wanted to sell our houses for $200,000, but the reality of market is certainly something we should consider, so.
Right.
All right, so a motion to continue this to Wednesday, November 9th at 7:15.
So both?
Motion by member Kent. Do we have a second? Second by member Grove. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Great, thank you. The next item on our agenda is 575 Quincy Avenue, site plan review, Quirk Car Dealerships is the applicant. So this is a continued public hearing. We did hear testimony on this last month, so if you just, Attorney Marinelli, if you just want to update kind of what's transpired since our last meeting?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Frank Marinelli, pleased to appear on behalf of the Quirk Car Companies. And as we presented the last time, just go over the site plan here. The proposal is for a 26,480 square foot Genesis dealership, which is a luxury product, and it's a brand-new building that will be constructed on a three-and-a-half-acre portion of the 39-acre shipyard land that is located in Braintree. It's the southwesterly corner of the shipyard property that is located in Braintree. And we have shown you the elevations where all of the showroom is oriented towards Quincy Avenue. The current elevation is about 12 to 14. There's about close to 5,700 cubic yards of fill to create a pad that is elevated, and the building will sit nicely in that corner, and then will be tapered. The landscaping will be all around. We've got a landscaping plan that we've shown you. There's about 50-something trees, another 50-something shrubs, and all told, the landscape plan shows a couple hundred plantings. The issues, I don't know whether this went off. The items that came up the last time we presented that the dealership service and sales is a use by right. All of the density and dimensional requirements of the highway business zone are complied with. The building coverage can be 25%. The building footprint is only 17%. We take up some of the existing pavement because currently it is, the shipyard is permitted for storage of vehicles, and we provide 25% open space. So we had draft, Mr. Grove had asked about the glass. That was one of the items that came up the last time, and we did provide the letter from two architects with the specification of the showroom glass, and stated in the memo was the intent is to use no glare glass. We also provided a lighting plan, which shows no spillage on the lighting. We provided the spec on the lights, the wall packs, the light poles, et cetera. Currently, there's a guard shack that is located in this area, which was part of a 2013 permitting, and that guard shack, which is the intake for the Quirk storage area on the shipyard, that's going to be moved several hundred feet east in an easterly direction. Right now, it is located in around here, which is west of the Columbia Terrace intersection, and when this is built, the new entry will be up here, as you can see. So the guard, the guard and security intake will be up in that area. The draft conditions, there's 56 draft conditions. We've reviewed all of them. They're all acceptable. There are items that have been discussed by the project engineer with staff, Jim Burke, who's a project engineer, is here, if you have any questions on any of the stormwater. The stormwater, as you know, has been peer-reviewed. There are stormwater improvements. The traffic memo has been accepted because there is not any quantity of new trips that would trigger a traffic study. It's one new vehicle per two to three minutes. We were requested to install a complete perimeter, black vinyl fence, and that has, that's going to happen, that's now on the revised plan. So there'll be, this site will be completely isolated in terms of being cordoned off with black vinyl. The deliveries of the cars will be through the normal storage lot, through the intake guardhouse that we have, and any inventory will be driven over into the site. So that's also in the conditions, I think, that the assistant planner had provided. So I think that covers it. We also had, the interior landscaping is required to be 5% under the bylaw. We have 10.2%. So we have over twice as much on the interior landscaping for the parking area than is required. We have 199 parking spaces, 76 are required under the bylaw, and those are broken down in terms of, they're on the, it's on the revised plan that you have, but there's, there's 30, let me just give you the numbers on that. We have 37, 33 spaces for employees. We've got 42 spaces for service, 57 spaces for sales, and 67 spaces for inventory. So there's a total of 199 parking spaces where, under the bylaw, 76 would be required. The snow storage, we were asked to increase that, and that was increased from about 9,700 square feet to over 18,000, so almost double on the increase on the snow storage. We're asked to describe the test drive route, and the test drive route is going to be out of the driveway on Hill Avenue, take a right, take a right on Quincy Avenue, and then take a right on East Howard Street, and then you go down to Des Moines Avenue and you take a left there, and then you take a left on Southern Autory and a left back onto Quincy Avenue. So that's the test drive route, and that also is in the conditions. The site has sloped granite curb around the parking lot, and it's got vertical granite curb around the building. So we were asked to also provide that. And I think we also provided a fire circulation plan, a fire truck circulation. Clearly, there's firefighting ability on all four sides of the building. And I think that covers it, Madam Chair. And as I said, we've reviewed the draft conditions, and they're acceptable. We were also asked to provide a roof, a roof screening plan for the mechanicals on the roof, and we provided that. Two architects provided that, that plan, which should be in your materials as well. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member McCamey, do you have any comments or questions?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. What are you going to do about signage, Mr. Marinelli? Are you going to have anything on Quincy Avenue?
Signage?
Signage, yeah. Like a monument sign or something, or?
I don't have any sign plans presently, but certainly, you know, end of the highway business, you have 100, 150 square feet of ground sign, can be 35 feet tall, and, you know, if we have any, I'm sure it'll be, I'm sure it'll look nice, and it'll be designed appropriately for the site, and if, as happens, sometimes you need a variance because of the letters or the wall signs. We would apply to the zoning board if we need any kind of relief.
Okay. Just because when I look at the schematic, I don't see a lot of place to put a sign, so I was just curious where it might go. I, you know, I see plantings and stuff, and then you have your parking lot, so again, I just didn't see a lot of area to put something closer down to Quincy Ave, so.
Do you know anything about that, Jim?
I don't. Typically, good evening, Jim Burke with the Cell Burke Cell. Typically, a lot of the times, we'll end up being placed in a parking space, like out front, and so you'll end up having, instead of 199 spaces, you'll end up with 198. That's certainly possible. It'll, we'll always, we always strive, once we get the design of the sign, is to make sure it complies with zoning, and that kind of dictates where it ends up going.
Okay, well, we'll want to know.
Understood.
Right, and any necessary adjustments, I would say. Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Member Crowe, any comments or questions?
Thank you, no questions. Appreciated the responsiveness to the questions asked at the last hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Kent, any comments or questions?
Just one question. Does Genesis currently have any elect- Just one question, does Genesis currently have any electric vehicles in their fleet? And if, if not now, is it planned, and then you'd need charging stations? I guess there's plenty of parking spaces anyway, but is that in the, has that been contemplated?
I can't answer for the manufacturer, but, I mean, in order to be competitive, everybody has to have electric vehicles, right? They're, they're all making them these days, or most, most companies, most manufacturers are, but I don't have an exact, I'm not the product guy. I did check the pricing, though, the pricing seems to be 47,000 to 57,000 on, a pretty competitive price for a luxury vehicle.
Well, I just assume then that the, the property would be able to install
Yes.
Charging stations?
Yeah, I, I don't think that would be an issue at all.
Okay.
Is that it? All right. Member Grove, do you have any comments or questions? I don't have any further comments or questions. I appreciate the thorough response this evening. I would like to ask staff if there is, I know we have the draft conditions in the staff report, but is there anything you want to highlight, or is it pretty straightforward?
Pretty straightforward. I'd like to make one comment, if I may, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Crowe, I pointed this out earlier in the weekend, there is one minor edit to be made to condition 30. It should read 219 parking spaces. There's a mistype, it says 119 parking spaces. Other than that, staff has recommended that the public hearing be closed, that all correspondence be accepted into record, and that the application be approved.
Great, thank you. And just a reminder, this is a public hearing, and the public hearing portion of our meeting is still open, so if there is anybody in the public who wishes to speak to this application, please feel free to come up now, not seeing anyone. We do have the draft conditions, the applicant has noted that they were all set. We do have one revision noted by staff, which we'll just take into consideration when you're making the motion, a motion this evening. But first, I think we can go ahead and close the public hearing, so if we can get a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second? Second by Member Grove, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? We have correspondence list through the 6th of October, is that the most recent date? This one that we have?
Correct, yes.
Is there one?
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay. So a motion to enter into the record correspondence through the 6th of October, so moved by Member Grove, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? And so, Chair, entertain a motion on this application.
Motion to approve site plan review for file number 22-08 with revision to condition 30 noted on the record.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Grove, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Ah, is that it? That's the end? All right, ladies and gentlemen, that is the end of our agenda this evening. With that, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Member McComme, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.